Hi, everybody. Welcome to ION Ashkosh. Cheryl Hens here, and Dan Ryland is back from sick bay, and he's joining us here in the studio tonight, so welcome back.
The two knee people.
We survived everything that we've been through. Still in rehab stage.
We're doing fine.
We are. Anyway, we're continuing our campaign for the upcoming election, our interviews with the various candidates who are campaigning right now. And we interviewed on previous shows two candidates for Ashkosh Common Council, and we're going to be interviewing two more this evening. There are three seats to fill, five candidates running. Bob Peschel is our first guest this evening, and he is the only incumbent. Now Burke Tower is running for mayor, but if he loses that position to Tony Palmieri, who's also running for mayor, he still will serve the following near on the council.
His con elected seat. Yeah, but Tony would be done.
Tony would be done if he loses. Yep. So anyway, Bob, welcome.
Welcome, Cheryl.
We're very happy to have you here. And in the second half hour, we'll be joined by Ronald Kane-Harty, who is making his second bid for a seat on the Ashkosh Common Council. So anyway, welcome again. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
If you are reelected, you will likely be one of the senior members on this council after only serving one term. I don't think I've ever seen anything like that before. How does that make you feel?
You know, I haven't really thought about it that much. So, you know, a lot of times people, you know, when something like that comes up, you know, there's always that assumption that deputy mayor comes along with all of that. And just to be honest with you, I'm not interested in a seniority position on the council. I'm not interested in being deputy mayor. Even if the council wants me to do that, I just don't think that's where I am in my experience as an elected official at this point. So if it were to come up that way, it's not something I would be interested in. But seniority is something that's proven in my mind. It's not something that's necessarily given you because of where you've been elected before and where you've turned out in the election. And I by far wouldn't say that I would be the senior person on the council. So it's just a, I think it's a phrase that's used in such.
Well, in terms of tenure, though, you and Burke, if he elected, you would be.
That is true.
Two senior members.
But I look at it as that, when I look at being the senior position or that senior person, I look at that as being a position that is held with a great amount of education, a great amount of detail and knowledge in regards to their role within the council. And I just don't, I feel that I have a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience, but when I compare myself to those who are sitting previously, some of those who even sat, you know, for good, almost 10 years now, I'm nowhere in comparison to that.
Sure. Why are you running for reelection?
I'm running for reelection because there's still a lot of stuff to get done.
There always will be stuff to be done, though.
There always will be.
So will you always run, I guess, if you're using that logic then?
I'm not sure that I will always run, but I believe that there's things that I've been working on. In my second, in my second year, I got on some boards that I really, really enjoyed. And I've kind of moved forward with some issues that I, that I kind of missed my first year.
Okay, such as?
Such as one would be safety in regards to the Riverwalk, you know, railings and that. And I've spent a lot of time this, my second term, making it known that we shouldn't be doing a Riverwalk without railings if it's absolutely possible. And such, and so I've spent a lot of time really talking about that. I've spent a lot of time making sure that we get some things that I think are needed in parks, that citizens want in parks and such. And so I think my second year, I really found my stride of what really compelled me as a city councilman. So, and I think the other thing, and it's funny because sometimes this isn't a winning issue, but it's an issue, and sometimes we stick with non-winning issues because they're the right issue. And in my mind, sustainability is the right issue. And we've taken some small strides in regards to energy efficiency, you know, whether it's just light bulbs or whether it's starting to talk about looking at plans, creating a sustainability plan. We've taken some small strides towards this area. And I feel that there is a chance that I may be the only person who may be talking about that stuff, those issues if I'm reelected. And that makes it important that my voice is there on the council.
Let me just kind of follow up on that if I could, because one of the complaints that I've heard, and Dan and I, you know, a lot of people approach us and talk to us. And I've heard a few complaints about you in particular during your first term. One of them is that you're so much a sustainability guy and a green guy that you can't, no pun intended, see the forest for the trees at times, that you kind of miss the bigger picture. And that you tend to focus on little things for a few select individuals and kind of missing the mark when it comes to the mass of people. How would you respond to that?
I would say that there's probably a little truth, because part of my, part of my reality, personality, the work that I've done over years has always been for smaller groups. And so that natural, that natural ambition to make sure that there's core services that work properly for a small group of people that may not have a voice otherwise is always something I'm going to do. I think that, like I said, I feel that I'm growing into that, into that more bigger picture person as an elected official. And I don't believe that I am just a sustainability person in such. I sit on the long-range finance committee, and the reason why I took that committee, why I actually requested that committee was because I wanted to broaden my skills in regards to projecting out long-range needs for the city of Ashkosh. Best way to do that is to look at ourselves financially. And so I see my weaknesses, but I also see my areas where I'm growing and where I'm excelling.
Okay, that's fair enough. One of the other complaints that I've heard, certainly from a number of people, more so than that issue, is a lack of responding to people, whether it be by email or by phone, that they think you've been wishy-washy on the council, you've kind of puppeted Tony Palmieri's votes in a lot of cases, you know. And whether they're fair criticisms or not, we've heard them from a lot of folks. So how would you respond to those, Bob?
Well, the first one is, in regards to it being, I guess, Mr. Palmieri's puppet and such, if people actually watched how I voted, they would see several times that I voted counter to what Tony's done. And so that, I mean, really, let's talk about a voting record first before we just talk about, you know, statements such as that. I have to say, the volume of email, I was not ready for and such. And there were times where I just could not keep up with emails. And so there, I have to say that keeping up with email is very much a challenge, and I do my best doing it. Phone calls, I feel I'm pretty good about returning people's phone calls. I think that there's, I think that there's some people that it may take me a couple days to get back to phone calls. There may be some times where I get overwhelmed in work and family life and where I, you know, it happens, you forget a phone call and such. And there's been times where I've followed up weeks after and said, hey, you know, I'm sorry, I missed your phone call, I still wanted to follow up on it. But even though I may not return a phone call all the time, I may not respond to an email all the time, you should take note that when we did our budget, our CIP cycle, there was a gentleman who lives out north of town, who his concern was not having, taking away the right of the railroad to blow their horn in the neighborhood coming just into the city. He was a person that I talked to at the farmer's market, and then he responded back to me in a call over the summer, this last summer, and because I had made some concerns and inquiries about noise in relation to ice cream trucks and such. And so he asked me to look into that. Frankly, I didn't call him back, but I looked into it, and at the CIP, I questioned it even further and such. And so, yeah, the interactions are important, the return phone calls and emails are important too, but that doesn't mean that I'm not going to do my homework of what's asked of me. Even many people will call and just say, hey, I've got this issue, it's important to me, you don't need to call me back, but if you figure something out and you think it's important, call me back.
Okay.
The counterpart to the emails, and I think I've emailed you three times since you were elected, and you haven't responded to any of them.
And that's true.
Okay. But the odd thing, but the odd thing is, you are the number one emailer to the city manager.
Really?
I got six months of your emails, and they are prodigious, not only in the numbers, but on all of the things you ask city departments and Roloff to respond. The time consuming that you were putting on city government just to answer your emails is incredible, and I only did six months. When we interviewed Roloff right before Christmas, I asked him who was the number one emailer, and he said without a pause, Bob Peschel. So it's interesting, you have all the time to send all these detailed emails to Roloff and department heads, but you can't answer our emails.
Our being citizens.
Citizens, yeah. Yeah, just to comment, but.
I get it, but it still doesn't mean I'm not doing the work, though. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so I find that sort of ironic. On the one hand, you know, you're just pushing, pushing, pushing. I'm not going to read any of them, but you're really asking for them to do a lot of things on a regular basis. Meet with me, do this, I want this report, I want this report, I want this report.
Well, that was, that was six months, that was my first six months that you requested that.
So you're not sending us any mail now?
I would say that my emails are not as prodigious at this point.
Roloff says you're still number one as of December of 2010.
And frankly, if he says that I am, I'd say that's great, because frankly, I think that people have this idea that Mark and I don't have a good working relationship. But I like Mark a lot, and I think he's been doing a good job. And if it's, if I'm working that hard to work with our city manager and stuff, I think that's a plus.
All the emails aren't complimentary between you and Mark.
No, they're not. No, they're not.
Well, nor have some of the discussions at the council meetings.
Right, right, exactly.
But that's also the role of a council member, is not necessarily to be just this person who is complimentary all the time.
Okay.
Go ahead.
During the budget hearings, you did not vote for any pay raise for the city manager.
I did.
Been here 30 months, wanted a 2% raise, and why did you vote against the 2%?
I voted against the 2% because my understanding is that that raise was the raise that he chose not to take. He was offered a raise earlier in the year.
Oh, I don't know.
No, wait, hold on.
I don't know anything about that.
He wasn't offered a raise. He, even before we got into a conversation of offering a raise, he said, I'm not going to take a raise in 2010.
This was a raise for 2011, and you voted against it.
Okay. Then in my mind, I was voting for a raise in 2010. So misunderstanding in my part.
But you also said quite strongly that you thought he was doing a really good job.
I do.
Okay.
I do. And I think he's, you know, and I think that, like I said, there's that misconception that I'm hard on Mark and that he's not doing a good job and that he's not doing what I feel as a city councillor that he should be doing. And I think he's taken great strides and is very receptive to the community's needs.
Now, a year ago, you were after his hide. You used your council minutes or speaking to basically begin an evaluation of him at the city council meeting. You ruled out of order. You sent an email to him on January 4th about the culling of the deer. You ended by saying, in the end, this looks like you intentionally misled the council in even greater the community, a rather strong charge, which you attempted to answer. So he's doing a great job in 2000, at the end of 2010, but you really don't think he's doing a very good job at the beginning of 2010. Is that correct?
That was, at that point, and the most explanation for that is that that was a very heated meeting. That was a very heated meeting. We had James Rhoad on the agenda. There were people who weren't getting notices about things that were coming up to the city. People didn't understand stuff that was coming up to them. We had members who lived in the neighborhood of the cull that were upset that they weren't told about the culling taking place. I was upset that the city manager relinquished his duty to the chief of police and saying, don't tell me until it's done. If you do it, don't tell me until it's done. To me, the city manager needs to know all operations, especially something like sharpshooters shooting off firearms in a neighborhood. That's absolutely important.
Okay.
Okay. Let's talk about some definite things that are going on in the city. You know, of course, the first thing is the budget, you know. There's a lot of stuff going on in Madison right now, and it's, however it comes down, it's going to severely impact what goes on in the city.
Sure.
Have you given some thought yet to exactly how this is going? I realize we don't know what the impact is going to be, but certainly we know there's going to be a lot of cuts, and it's going to impact us. So have you given some thought, if you're reelected, Bob, to what might be on the chopping block here as far as cuts go?
I am realistic to think that there's some things that I probably value very much that may be, that may become services that are lessened. One would be our transit services. And that's, and I think that's one of the, one of the issues that's most vocalized through, that's been discussed the most, is that cut. I believe there's going to be other things that come out, you know, an impact on recycling services and return on that and such. There's going to be very tough choices.
That's in the governor's budget.
Yeah. It's very tough choices to be made. And I can't, even at this point, fathom what I would say would be the, would be the best things to do. But I do know that what it, what it looks like, what it's coming down as, is that even myself, my core services, the things that I feel are important, may be, you know, shifted because they have to be, because those are important services, and all our services are important. But making sure that we have the most vital services functioning for our city to the greatest extent that we can, I think is going to be the greatest task. And it's going to be a political task, too, because people don't, you know, when you put seven people up there, many times they all don't have the same opinions, you know.
We have heard, and I'm going to ask you to, you know, I guess, confirm or deny this, we have heard that garbage pickup may be privatized if some of these cuts come down the pike. Is there any truth to that at all?
I, if it's, if it, if it's come out in the last week, I haven't, I haven't heard anything yet.
I heard this before that.
So.
And it's been brought up in other years.
Yeah, but this was something that someone who's in city employment said. So, you know, it could be rumored, it could not be, I don't know.
It could very well be, but it hasn't come up in any of my conversations, and it's not anything that I've received in any type of council materials.
If it were to be privatized, or if any service that we're paying taxes for right now were to be privatized, would citizens then be getting a tax credit, if you will, or a reduction in taxes? Because we'd have to then pay for that service from a private company.
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't know at this point.
Is it something you'd advocate for?
I think it'd be a challenge for me to advocate for that at this point. It's something that I guess I'm not going to say yes to or no to. I need to know more information about it, but I believe, I believe that our best core services are done by the people who live in our community and by the services that are brought, that are maintained by our municipality.
Okay.
I have three votes that you took over the last term that, of interest to me. The first is, you voted against public safety when the chief of police came to ask to take away the liquor license of O'Briens. 90 abuses in six months, the second and third shift officers were going crazy all the time. Why did you vote against public safety?
At that time, I felt that, that the, what is the ordinance that they use?
A nuisance ordinance.
The nuisance ordinance. The nuisance ordinance calls for an actual plan that was, that would be created to the abatement process, that if in three incidents in however, I think it's nine months, I believe, that they would then create a timeline to remove that person or to change that, something in that, in that incident. Those were, there was something in there that I, at the time, wasn't comfortable, that I did not feel that the chief or the staff had done the process correctly.
Sounds like a technical reason.
Yeah.
Rather than a substantive reason. Is that correct?
Yeah, and there was no doubt, there was no doubt that there was a public safety issue there. But there was, in my mind, there was a concern on whether the actual law that we used was followed to the, to the way that it had been carried out respectively throughout the community.
Okay.
So that was, that was my concern. But I have sensed, I have sensed several times, talked to the chief when there were incidents coming up about O'Briens and talked about, where are you with this process? I let the chief know about four months after everything went down, that if he wanted to move forward with a removal of their license, that I would support the process. And there was two incidents over the last, over that last year that really led me to say, all right, this is, this is enough. And in all reality, I don't, I believe now that we don't have to follow that nuisance abatement law.
I see.
In order to do that.
Okay, a second vote is on Ashkosh Corp., the $5 million TIF. You voted against jobs, basically. Why did you vote no?
I voted because I did the math and saw that Ashkosh Corp. had the money. They didn't need to come to us and ask for the $5 million. It was clear, the public documents, they're publicly traded company. All you have to do is go to their annual plan, and you'll see the money that they have.
Third one, and this is my favorite one, this is the mayor's fire truck. This comes late at a council meeting, all right? You're up to vote first, right?
Yeah.
And you voted no. And I thought, God, Peschel, this is great. The other six council members voted yes, and you flip-flopped. Why did you flip-flop?
I, because I wanted to accept, I wanted to accept a gift.
No, you voted no, not to accept the gift.
But the process, I didn't, I didn't, I was, I didn't like the process.
I didn't either. I don't think anybody did.
No.
That's why we were glad you voted no.
But I thought, I thought the gift, I thought getting the gift was, was good, but I was uncomfortable with the process. And it was a, the whole, that whole meeting, I wish that I would have kept that vote no, and I wish that I would have kept it no straight through, partially because I just, the whole process just became a fog.
Yeah.
And it still is.
Yeah.
In regards to that. So it's, you know, Dan, you're, this, that was one of my, you know, one of my learning moments of, you know, making sure that when you, when you take a vote, that you know exactly, and I'm still learning that a little bit.
I understand. Thank you for your answer. Those are my three.
Thank you.
All right. The postal operation in the city of Ashkosh. I thought Dan might ask it, but I'll go ahead and I'll ask it because it is important. Do you think that the city council should have done something to try and keep that operation in the city? I know a couple of council members, well, not even a couple of council members, one council member, and I think Gordon Hens was out there as well. I don't know if there were any other council members out there, but as a collective lawmaking body for the city, shouldn't the council maybe have stepped up and said something?
We did. We passed a resolution saying that.
But done something a little bit more than that?
You know, I think it was one of those things where council was relying on Mark Roloff to lead us on that. And for me, I tried my hardest getting in touch with, I tried making my own phone calls to people in the postal service to getting my own answers. And I spent some time out on the lines on 20th Street with the, with the workers and such like that. I hope that there's still more that we can do and such, because it is absolutely important that we, that we keep that facility here. But I think that we, when we passed a resolution, we felt that we were taking, you know, a qualified step, and that we also empowered Mark Roloff as the representative of the city to meet with Pete Rye and to empower Pete Rye to ask for that feasibility study and to make all documents public in regards to that.
Okay. And with time winding down here, the, whatever its name is now, Park Plaza Hotel, City Center Hotel, we don't know what it's called these days, but they're wanting a substantial amount of TIF money from the city. Mark Roloff, our city manager, doesn't feel that there's enough trust there to really make that happen, and he thinks that they're being a little excessive with their demands. Where does Bob Peschel stand on that issue?
I am, as much as I want to see that corner succeed, I would have a very hard time investing in that, in that corner again. We just closed the TIF at the beginning of my, of my, of my term, and I would, my sense when I talk to the community, that there is not a support to offer a TIF to the community to, again, reinvest in that, in that intersection, in that hotel.
Okay. All right. Why don't you take about 20, 30 seconds, look into camera three, and tell folks why they should vote for you this spring?
Well, I want to thank you for the, for the two years that I've, that you've placed me on the, on the council. It's been a learning two years. I enjoy working on the council, and I enjoy working with the staff, and I enjoy working with the citizens of Ashkosh. Issues that are important to me are making sure that our city is a sustainable city, not just environmentally, but also economically, that we have safe parks, safe neighborhoods, and that our city is just moving forward. So thank you for the time, and I hope that you will continue to have me serve you come August 5th, or April 5th.
April 5th. There we go. All right. Well, you'd still be in office in August, so it's a fair statement.
I would.
All right, just sit tight. We're going to take a short break. When we come back, Ronald Kane-Harty will be joining us. We'll be right back.
Every year, the U.S. Department of the Treasury receives about 1.4 million reports of problems with paper checks. Checks can be lost, stolen, or delayed. If you still receive social security payments by paper of problems with paper checks. Checks can be lost, stolen, or delayed. If you still receive social security payments by paper check, Treasury wants you to know about a safer, more convenient way to get your money. The Direct Express Prepaid Debit Mastercard. The Direct Express card is new and is available to anyone receiving social security benefits, even if you don't have a bank account. Your monthly benefits will be automatically placed onto your card account each month on the day your money is due. While other debit cards cost money, it is possible to use the Direct Express card for free to make purchases, pay bills, and get cash at thousands of locations nationwide. There are no sign up or monthly account fees, no more waiting for the mail, or worrying about lost or stolen checks. Call 1-877-212-9991, or visit www.usdirectexpress.com.
Welcome back to the second half of I on Oshkosh, and Ronald Cane Hardy is joining us now. He is another candidate seeking a seat on the Oshkosh Common Council. There are three seats available, and you can cast three votes for the candidates of your choice. You don't have to vote for three, but you can vote for as many as three. So, welcome, thanks for being here.
I'm glad to be here again.
This is your second bid for a common council. You ran last year, and the primary did you in last year, right?
No, I made it through the primary.
You made it through the primary, okay, all right. I couldn't remember, I thought, I thought you had gotten knocked out, but that's good that you did. All right, okay, excellent. So, why are you running again?
Well, I still feel like a lot of the issues that I ran for last year are still relevant. A lot of the things that I wanted to see happen, that I wanted to see, that I would have pushed for on the city council are still out there. There's still a lot of plans that have not yet been addressed, and so I still think that, that the things that I want to do are, are relevant, but then also now with this budget crisis, I think that there's a, there's a whole new realm of things that we need to address with the city, and I think that I'm qualified to do that, so.
Okay. Well, let's talk about the issues that you ran on last year that are still kind of hanging out there as being unsettled. What are some of those?
Well, one, for example, is bicycle pedestrian plan. That was something that we were hoping to see come through last spring. In fact, I didn't even think it was going to be relevant last election, because it looked like it was really on pace to be approved and before the council. We're still waiting for that, although I am glad to see that it looks like the city is kind of working on the draft plan and basing road, some road projects, assuming that that plan will be adopted. So, that's, that's a positive there. We still don't have a sustainability plan, that's something that the city's been working on for like three years now.
And you were on the Sustainability Committee, is that correct?
No, I'm not anymore.
Not anymore, but you were.
I was, and so that was something we were working on then. I mean, that started way back, almost three years ago, that that planning started. The Vision Oshkosh surveys, a lot of those things are still out there. So, there's still a lot of things that I'd, I'd like to see happen. However, given the budget situation, you know, now we need to start looking at the price tag for all of these items and start questioning, well, okay, this is something that I'd really like to see. What's the ticket price for the city? Can we afford to do this? And so, there's going to be a little bit of a balance now this year.
There may be, well, there will be things that are going to have to be cut as opposed to maybe starting new things. What would you cut, and what would you cut to make room for some of the things that are your pet projects?
That's a good question, Joe.
Well, my pet project, I, I'm not sure I can, it's going to be really difficult to have pet projects and try to, to justify funding them when we're looking at dealing with whether we can even retain our existing staffing as it is, whether we can maintain core services that the city has. So, I, I don't know that we're even in a position to talk about that right now. The city's going to have to look at a, a number of things to try to deal with the budget. I mean, I'm glad that it wasn't quite so hard, but then on the other hand, with the way that the school district is going to get nailed, that's even more troubling. I would have rather the city absorbed more of that budget cut than the school district, I think. But still, it's going to be difficult, and I can't identify specific things that I would cut, but I think that everything has to be looked at in a new light, and we need to identify what are core services for the city, and then what are the things that, that can put us in a position to both weather this short-term storm and then put us in a position for, for a long-term, you know, sustainability, in the other sense of the word, for the city budget and city operations. And so, I think, you know, we need to look at, at the city's structure, you know, departments, is there ways that we can consolidate departments, consolidate services? Can we work with the county and try and maybe take advantage of opportunities to consolidate there? I, I think everything has to be on the table like that. I think we need to look, this is not a time to be territorial about this county jurisdiction, this is city. Where, where can we find ways to weather this budgetary crisis and come out all right in the end?
Okay.
You used the word pet in your question and answer, so I have to go to my pet question.
Okay.
There's a, an amendment to the pet ordinance that's somewhere in City Hall.
Okay.
That would allow up to four hen chickens to be in a person's property in Oshkosh. My question is not whether you'd vote for it or not vote for it. My question is, on a scale of one to 10, with 10 being the highest, how important is that to you?
How important is that to me?
Yeah, it's a city issue.
As a city issue, well.
Just, just me a number now.
You just want a number, how important is?
One to 10.
That's a very interesting way of phrasing that. In terms of importance, I would say maybe a four.
Okay.
It's not something that's really going to have budgetary implications. I mean, there are some, you know, some, some licensing and things that we'll have to address with that, but, you know, it's not the kind of thing that's really a, a major issue, but I think it's something that, you know, personally, I would support that.
Okay, let's, thank you for the four.
Sure, one thing is, I, I don't think I could keep hens in, in my backyard. I have enough trouble just taking care of my cat and the plants and the kids, and you know, I'm not going to add four hens to that, but I fully, fully support my neighbors that want to do that.
You know, it's one of those issues, like you say, it's really not that important, but it's one of those issues that everyone gets excited about.
Sure.
And it absorbs a lot of time, just because it's something different.
Yeah.
So, if it does come up, my guess is there's going to be a lot of debate on it.
I think so.
Yeah. Did you have anything else to share? Sure, go ahead.
Commercial development on Marion Road. Cheryl and I have been sitting at this table before the thing was launched, I think. Everyone comes with an idea for Marion Road. We got developers who come in and give us the song and dance, we got council members, and, and very little happens. You know, it's kind of stalled again. On the other hand, if you look at residential development on 8th and 9th, South Main, over at Longfellow property, and it's booming. Is it time maybe to take part of Marion Road and say, you know, we've had it with commercials? Should we go with some residential development then?
Well, you'll, you know, the, some of the growth that you've seen along, along Pearl, for example, you've got these apartment buildings coming in.
Big complex, yeah.
These apartments are targeting primarily students, and they're offering services that are very appealing to students, and so they fill up, they're offering free internet, you know, you know, all of those types of things.
One guy's always taxes on his whole thing, though, on the corner.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You know.
How profitable it is.
But, so, I mean, what they, what they're doing is they're really appealing to a market, and it's building a new type of demographic in that neighborhood. What with the, on, on Wisconsin, you've got the, you know, or the Thai food place and the restaurants along there, and now you've got this growth this way, which is stretching down towards the city center.
But I want to go west of Jackson, that other stuff, or west of Wisconsin, those ones you talked about have been there for quite a while, and I think they, independent of, of the commercial development, we got all this space behind Morton Pharmacy and that whole area in there that was going to be developed, going to be developed, and it's not going to be developed.
Well, the, this is not, I mean, all of these things have, you know, these great ideas have failed because of this economy. This is not the time to be really putting forward, you know, a, you know, these multi-use hotel condo things, those are, are not going to happen. And I think that the market is, is basically told us that, that certain types of things are not going to work there because people aren't willing to invest that type of.
Why not put in some middle-class condos and things like that?
That, that may not be a bad idea. I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to look at anything that comes forward out of there, but I, I think that what we found is that we can't really force something to happen, that, you know, if you force something to happen, it might fail because it, it may not be, you know, I would have loved to see a grocery store down, a Trader Joe's would have been great. I would have loved to have seen some type of, you know, a combination residential retail that's not high-end, but something that, you know, especially with the, with the water nearby, it's, it's got, it's got great potential. But that's one of those things like the Pioneer. We're just, we wait, and we wait, and we hope that it gets developed, and the right kind of thing has to come along. And it may involve a little bit of an economic turnaround, or maybe somebody will come with a, a great idea, and, and it'll happen.
Sounds like you still want to hang your hat on commercial development and not go anywhere else.
There has to be a little bit of realism there. I mean, you know, we, we've put a lot into, I mean, I, I've wanted to see downtown growth with a retail. It's not happening. Hopefully with the new road construction and the new, I mean, that ended just in the fall. We haven't had a chance for that to start thriving again, but you can only handle so much retail in a city of this size and in an economy like this, and it's, retail breeds more retail. So, if it's not there now, maybe it's not ready for that. I would be willing to look at residential for that, or maybe there's some public use that could be used for that.
A nice park.
Some, a nice park, somebody had an idea for a baseball diamond or something, I don't know.
Those things don't really produce tax revenue.
Well, they don't, but, but it's just sitting there, and it's been sitting there for a long time.
That's, that's the problem, is that the city really put it, a lot of, put a financial price tag on that, you know, through the TIF, and so we've got expectations, and I think maybe we need to revisit those expectations.
And Trader Joe's would be a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it won't happen.
It's not happening.
No.
Well, speaking of TIFs, you know, the city council this last year voted to give TIF money to Oshkosh Corp. Dan just asked Bob Peschel about his particular vote on that issue in our earlier segment. You know, you obviously weren't on the council, but, you know, did you support the council's decision to give them TIF money?
That was, you know, that, that was a really difficult, I, I found that there were some compelling arguments in both cases. My instinct was to oppose it, because I didn't think that it met the purposes of the TIF, the property, I mean, we're talking a 20-year, 25-year TIF for something that may not even be in production after five years or after 10 years, how is that, you know, are we going to see that money back? You know, because that's the idea of a TIF, is you get something and then 20 years from now, you're getting tax revenue. We may not ever see that. So, I had a lot of concerns about that. On the other hand, they were talking about the jobs, and that's something that is really important, and it's even more important now. Oshkosh is hiring now, and so they're doing very well. I don't know that it's related to that TIF necessarily, I don't know if it's related to that paint facility.
Well, and they were already planning that paint facility and starting on it before the vote was even taken. So, it failed the but-for test, and that right there should have killed the request.
And I have, I, I find it really hard to believe that they, that they were not capable of paying for that themselves.
Right, right. Go ahead.
What personal traits do you have that, that you think would add to making you a good council member? Just a couple of them.
That's a great question. Personal traits. Well, first, I think that I am, I'm very much interested in cooperation and in building consensus on issues. I work very well with people. I've, I've worked with Mark Roloff, I've worked with a lot of the council members, not so much the new council members, but I've worked with both, both mayoral candidates, and I tend to get along well with people, I tend to look for ways where I try, I try to listen to what other people have to say. I'm willing to allow my perceptions or my opinions to be changed or moved, and I'm willing to compromise and find ways where we can, where we have common ground. And so, that's one way, I think, that I can be effective on the council in, in not contributing to divisiveness, but working on cooperation. I think that's important for the council. Also, I think with, with the budgetary and the managerial, I mean, professionally, I'm, I'm, I'm a librarian, but I'm also a manager. I have two departments that I supervise, I've got a, a budget that's just shy of $900,000. I, I'm, I work with that mindset of, of what are our goals, what do we need to do to get there, what are the strategies and tools that we can do? So, I think that that's something else that I can bring to the council. And, you know, one other thing I would bring up is that I really believe in trying to bring the public into government, local government, participating in whatever way possible, and I, so I answer my phone, I return phone calls, I reply to emails, more so with emails, phone calls, I won't answer the phone during dinner, that's my only rule on that one. And so, I, you know, I, I want to be accessible to people, and I want to encourage people to contact me and, and work with me and, and change my opinion if that's what they feel like they need to do.
Cheryl asked earlier about the budget impact with the governor's budget, but the other real question, and you're, you're a university librarian, what if the budget bill passes and collective bargaining is basically gutted? What is that going to do to the morale of city employees or university employees?
It's going to be hard. I mean, number one, you're going to see a lot of people retiring, and they're going to be retiring before certain deadlines because of the financial impact, because of the, some of the things with sick leave and the way sick leave is crude and then used for purchasing health care after retirement. If that's pulled out, if that's no longer an option, a lot of people are going to be looking at, at the bottom line and retiring. And so, you're going to have a brain drain right off the bat, both, both with the city and with the university, definitely with the university. The morale issue is going to be a big one, and I think that that's going to be difficult to overcome. I think that, I mean, with, with, with the library on, on campus, we're, we're committed to our mission, and we're committed to seeing it through, no matter what the budgetary impact. But it is going to be hard for the employees that are union, that do have collective bargaining rights. I don't have collective bargaining rights, although I am a public employee. So, it's going to be difficult, and I think that the city, the city, the city council, the city administration needs to continue to work with the city staff and negotiate, not bargain, if bargaining's not on the table, we still need to work with them and, and come to make sure that we're still including them in decision-making in, you know, that relates to work and salary and benefits. You know, I think we need to be as cooperative as possible and try and make sure that there is not a morale issue there.
Okay. I want to go back to a TIF-related question. The owners of the Park Plaza Hotel, or whatever name they're using these days, have made
Not at this point.
Okay.
No, I don't feel that privatizing public services is, has any benefit financially or in terms of quality of service. And if you take trash, for example, is a great example.
It's the one that usually comes up first.
Sure. So, with trash, if you privatize your garbage collection and you as a resident, we're just, let's say we're dissatisfied with the way that our trash is being picked up. Let's say this commercial group that's collecting our trash now says that we have to do, you know, a certain thing with our trash. We have no means of redress. There is no shopping around. It's the only company and they service the entire city because that's the way it works. What can we do? We have no means of changing that policy or, but way it is now, because it's a city service, we have the ability, and that happened with the garbage tax fee thing, this, people said, "We don't want it to be this way" and we were able to change that because it is a public service. And so, that's just an example of how privatizing something like a public service is a negative. Look, just imagine if you were to privatize firefighting. I mean, the consequences would be alarming. You know, "I'm sorry, you haven't paid your bill. We're not going to put your house out," you know.
That has happened in some places in this country, though.
I've heard about that and it's a perfect example. Public services should not be privatized.
Yeah. You know, garbage pickup is, like Dan said, the one thing that we always hear, that's always right at the top of the list and it would be almost ridiculous to think about privatizing that right now after we've just spent millions on, you know, collectively as a city and as a citizenry, millions of dollars on automated trucks and blue bins that we've all bought, you know, and they want to go to regular trash that's automated, more bins, you know, this kind of thing. So, it would be ridiculous, I think, to even look at that right now. So, as far as commercial and economic development goes, Ron, we have so many empty buildings sitting around town and not just empty buildings, but they still have their old signage on them, whether it be on the building or in a standalone-type, you know, situation. You know, I really think that makes us look tacky. It's bad enough we have the empty buildings, but then we have signage that's just outdated. Isn't there something that we can do as a city, in your opinion, to, you know, either exercise an ordinance that's already on the books or put an ordinance on the books that if you're going out of business, you have to take down your signage at a minimum, you know?
Well, I don't know what, if there is anything on the books with that.
I don't know either.
I think what we need to do is look beyond...
We're not being enforced.
We need to look beyond that and with the vacant buildings and how can we get them occupied again?
Yes.
How can we repurpose some of these vacant buildings and they're downtown and they're along the river and they're all over the city? And I, last year, I brought that up often, that I really feel like we need to repurpose some of these buildings and there's got to be some way that they can be, the city can step in and get those properties into the hands of people who want to do something with them and even perhaps work with those people if there's some type of financial means, either, you know, low-interest loans, some way to get them a jumpstart on getting these buildings repurposed and get some activity going in them.
The university and Ashkosh Corp. have been the two people or two businesses, organizations, entities, whatever, that have taken over and occupied some of these empty boxes.
Right. The Cub Foods is a great example of that.
The city spent two or three years on an events policy and the first test was that they granted exemptions to Sawdust Days and the farmer's market. Now, you get a certain amount of cynicism from that, I think, as a citizen, that they went through this whole process and the events that most people wanted them to pay something for, they said, "No, it doesn't meet the criteria and we give you the exemption." What's your response?
I was surprised that they granted the exception to Sawdust Days in particular. I thought that was, I was a little bit shocked. It's, we're talking a ticket of what, of $12,000 to $25,000. The events policy came because of this type of thing.
That's right.
Yeah.
And Sawdust Days, I mean, they claimed that it would, I guess, stretch their budget, something along those lines. It's not that difficult to do that type of budgetary math. You have vendor fees. All of those people selling things, they're paying a vendor fee. It's not like, you know, the farmer's market, you might think it might be different, but it's the same thing. There are vendor fees involved there. You do the math, you pass those costs on to those vendors. Those vendors are still going to be there because they're making money off of that. And so, yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I was surprised by that. Farmer's market, I...
And the little ones, like, what was it, Special Olympics or something? They socked them with, and they don't have any money to begin with.
Yeah, it, they're, that, I'd like to see that policy and, there does need to be ways to waive those fees. So, that process does need to be in there, but I was very surprised about Sawdust Days.
Thank you for your answer.
Well, it's just kind of like the leech, you know? They had to revisit that and tweak that and it just seems like this events policy is something that needs to be revisited and tweaked before we get too far into it.
Right.
So, how would the city change if you were elected?
How would the city change? If I were elected, I don't think the city would dramatically change. I would be awfully vain to think that. I don't think any one counselor is going to magically transform things. I don't have, you know, secret financiers that are going to come in and, you know, and start buying vacant properties, but I do think that I can contribute to a collegial atmosphere on the council and with the city staff and hopefully, hopefully work to move this. It's going to be a very difficult time this year and next year with the budget and I'm hoping that I can at least contribute to finding some creative means of getting through these solutions, finding some solutions for this. I will, I will, in terms of city staff and the bargaining and the contracts, that's something that I really do not want to see layoffs.
Okay. Why don't you just real quickly look into camera three and tell folks in about 20 seconds or so why they should vote for you?
Well, I really hope that you vote for me on April 5th. If you elect me to the city council, I will answer the calls except for during dinner and I will reply to your emails and I will try to do the best I can to serve the city of Ashkosh.
All right. Excellent. Thanks so much for being here.
Sure.
And thanks to Bob Peschel for joining us in the first half and that's going to do it for us. We will see you next time. Until then, take good care and keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Ashkosh.